I have seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll please.
Thank you Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
President.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And appears Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent. And you have a quorum Mayor.
Thank you. This evening we have Dr. Robert Lindstad from Superintendent of Sunrise Christian Academy to lead us in prayer. Dr. Lindstad.
Glad that my students are doing well because it seems like when they do well, I get more invitations to come here and pray for you guys, so.
We need it.
Good. Let's pray. Father, we come to you tonight and we thank you first of all for the many blessings that you give to us. And Father, those blessings include your son, includes the word of God, it includes the freedom that we enjoy in this country. And Father, we do pray for the health and the safety of our community. We pray, Father, that that the things that we have been given, that we won't take for granted. And Father, in your word, it says it were to pray for our country, for our community, for our leaders, and so we do that. We pray for those like our firemen and our policemen who do endanger themselves as they carry out their their duties. We pray for those that are in leadership in our community that will have godly and orderly lives. Father, we pray especially for our young people as we see how impressionable they are and the influences that can often bring them from success, bring them to a life of distress. And Father, we pray that as a community, we might do everything we can to build them up and to direct them toward the word of God and toward Jesus Christ. Father, we thank you also for the privilege that we have in this country to express our our points of view. And Father, we pray that as different points of view are are aired and given, we pray, Father, that we'll be a community that has kindness one toward another. Father, most of all, we thank you for the gift that we have in Jesus Christ. We pray these things in his name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the very good flag. This evening we have a couple of proclamations, so I'll start with the first one to dealing with Arbor Day. So to the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. In eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas twenty twenty-two is the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. I therefore, Jim Benage, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth as the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration of our Arbor Day in the city of Bel Air and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And I'll ask Mr. Gary Northall to join me at the podium. Gary is the chairman, the president of our tree board.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gary Northall, chairperson of the Bel Air Tree Board. I'm here mainly tonight to update everyone on the board's plans for Arbor Day. But as I was typing this up, I realized that the board needs members. So I was reading the bylaws that we generated a few years ago. The board consists of seven members. We currently have five. I'm inviting anyone that might be interested in joining the board, the board, to check out the board's portion of the city website under Government, Boards and Commissioned Tree Boards. On the left portion of the webpage, among other entries, you can view PowerPoints of some of the board's programs. Past Arbor Day observances are Senior Survivor Tree Program, pardon me, and one PowerPoint showing the trees planted in various Bel Air parks around town. There's a link to the volunteer application if anybody wants to fill it out. Back to Arbor Day. The official Arbor Day this year is, National Arbor Day is Friday, the twenty-ninth. The tree board always schedules our observances the following day so that more people can attend. Prior to that, prior, so ours is Saturday, the April thirtieth at ten a.m. Prior to that date, the Bel Air Parks Department will have planted the lace park elm in Central Park, west of the community pool and near the children's playground. Thanks to the Bel Air Lions Club for donating three hundred dollars towards the purchase of this lace park elm. The observance will be short. Bel Air City Council President, President Justin Smith plans to be there to read the official Arbor Day proclamation again. This would be a good opportunity for citizens to meet one of our city councilmen, Justin. Also in attendance, get ready for this title, I had to look this up, will be the city's state-certified municipal arborist, Shannon. I didn't know till today there was such a thing, but Shannon Dewey, by the way. It should be a good opportunity for citizens to meet our city arborist, Shannon. I believe he'll be able, he'd be available to answer questions. Parking will be available on Central Park Avenue in the cul-de-sac leading to the community pool or on the avenue. In the event of inclement weather, we will move the observance to the senior room or possibly the community room at City Hall. Questions? Answers? All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Life Smart Team Sunrise Christian Academy. So they recently won first place for state and will be representing the state of Kansas at Nationals in Washington, D.C. on April twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. So I think that's this week, right? Okay, I will read the proclamation and invite Peggy O'Neil, who is the SCA Life Smart sponsor and former city council member, to come to the podium and say a few words about Life Smart program, the proclamation. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas the governing body has the opportunity to pause from its legislative duties to recognize those who have brought a positive image to this community, and whereas Sunrise Christian Academy was founded in Bel Air by Dr. Robert Lindstad in nineteen eighty-three and has grown to over five hundred and forty students, and whereas Life Smart is a premier student organization that provides real-world education for pupils who learn about core consumer topics and develop critical thinking skills, participation focuses focus on five key topic areas. Consumer rights and responsibilities, the environment, health and safety, personal finance and technology. Whereas Sunrise Christian Academy Life Smart Team won first place for the state of Kansas, and whereas Sunrise Life Smart Team will be representing the state of Kansas at Nationals in Washington, D.C. on April twenty-one through twenty-four. I, Jim Benage, Mayor, do hereby congratulate Sunrise Christian, Sunrise Life Smart Team for winning state and wish them the best of luck representing Bel Air and the state of Kansas at Nationals. Would you please join me at the podium?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you. I do. Yes, thank you very much. Of course I do, right, Ty? Yes, twelve years. Ty knows I had a lot to say on the bench. Thank you so much, Council Mayor and all the staff for this proclamation, and we are very honored to have it. Life Smart was started in, on Kansas, twenty-eight years ago, from the Kansas Council of Economic Education. I found about, out about it through a student's mother at school. And so I started coaching it eighteen years ago. And it has just been something that we've done through volunteers. All these students come in during homeroom once a week. It's all online until you get to January, then in January, if you score high enough through the fall and all your online tests, then you're invited in March to go to Wichita State, which we have gone to for fifteen years, not consecutively, but for fifteen years. And this year, we won first place. We are so honored. We will fly out at six fifteen in the morning and we will represent Kansas along with, there's thirty-nine other states coming, plus some of the territories. And so thank you for this honor, and we are so proud to represent Kansas and the city of Bel Air. And I'd like to bring my team up. These are all juniors and seniors, so if you guys would come up and introduce yourselves, I appreciate you having us. And tell them what test you took.
Okay. Hi, my name is Piper. I'm a junior and I'm the captain of our team and I took the health and safety quiz.
I'm Sadie Nelson and I'm a junior as well, and I took the consumer, the consumers test.
My name is Carter Perkins. I'm a junior as well, and I took the technology test.
I'm Maxwell Jones. I'm a senior and I took the finance test.
I am Charles Tiedem. I'm a senior and I took the environment test.
Very good. Great job.
Do you have any questions for us, Council, Mayors?
Are you all prepared for the, for the test in Washington, D.C.?
We are. We don't know what to expect, but we've been preparing.
Good. Great.
We will send pictures, so thank you.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is determined agenda additions. Are there any additions to consider? Very none, I'll move on to consent agenda. So this contains minutes from the April fifth regular council meeting, as well as accepting petitions and approving, authorizing resolutions for phase two of Bristol Hollows. Any discussion of the consent agenda? Very none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, all motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
All second.
A motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Very none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Move on to item eight, consideration of appropriation ordinance twenty-two oh seven in an amount of two hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. And this pay period is low with minor expenses. Are there any questions of staff? Very none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance twenty-two dash zero seven.
All second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Very none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Item nine A, Wood Lawn Construction Update. I'd like to invite Mr. Dakota Zimmerman to the podium to give us an update on the wood lawn reconstruction progress. Mr. Zimmerman.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, city council members. See if we get the presentation up here. Okay. All right, yeah, as the mayor said, I'm here to give an update on the wood lawn project. We are making some good progress. May not be as visual right now, but there has been some really good progress and I'm excited to tell you about it. As always, start off with the safety statement. Our biggest one is the fire access rose, road. That was a big item for phase two that we're in right there along the pond, north of Quill Ridge. The fire department did request that they really wanted this, so we got that in there, got it signed so that we can try to prevent public use of it. We know it's getting used. But they're, they're happy with that, that we got that in, and that way they can respond to citizens as they need on the east side of there with all those one, one-way in and out areas. Also, we have some drop-offs. As you can tell, there's quite a bit of elevation change with this. So we added a lot of wedges throughout there in case some reason a car did get through, there's more of a wedge, it's have this hard, hard fall. That's mostly in the areas where we don't have jersey barriers that are really protecting that, so that was added. And Chief Atterbury has been attending some of our progress meetings, has been pretty crucial in that, giving us some things that he's seeing from his side and things we're seeing, and it's a pretty good partnership going on there, so I want to give him a shout out on that. So from safety, everything's going pretty good. We have not had any major recordable accidents on site, so that's always a huge plus, of course. You know, we want these guys to go home at night and see their families. It is a dangerous field, but it's going, it's going fairly well in that perspective. Again, just in general note, updates, the city's been really good about keeping that on their, their social media site. We do have our contact card, which a lot of citizens are using, and thankfully they're using it for. We try our best to respond as soon as possible and, and I'm glad they're using that. So progress, as of today, we have charged seventy-two working days of the allotted three hundred and thirty-three plus the forty cleanup days, which puts us at nineteen percent complete. And on their schedule that we've been given, I think it was about two weeks old, the schedule we have from the contractor, they're still on schedule with that. So current activities that we're working on, like I said, a lot of it you can't see very well because it's underground, but the storm sewer, they have been moving on that, which is fantastic because that's the critical path. You know, as you can imagine, everything just works from the ground up. So by them installing this box, the size of this box, the truck deliveries can only haul two of those segments at a time. So they come down wood lawn, they pick those two off, install them, and it's just a cycle going, so they're making some fantastic progress for that when they can. Santeri sewer and water line work there at the railroad right away. We're working on that stuff. That's ahead of schedule. And then some alternate activity that's going on is the milling dirt work and installing base rock for the pavement. So the next few slides, it's got some more photos of what's going on out there, give you a visual. As you can see, it's a lot of dirt work. That top left one is them working on the actual mainline pavement. The bottom one there on the left is filling the ditches, and then on the right is the, the storm sewer box, the drainage box that's collecting all this. Basically us remove those ditches, this is in lieu of that to collect all that rainfall. The top left here, okay, yep, top left here is that fire access road they're working on. Again, more storm sewer, which you can't see very well from the road when you're driving through, and water line works, a lot of underground activities going on, like I said, working from the ground up. And again, shockingly, more storm sewer. So Dollar has been out here working on this and doing fantastic. There's a lot of work just from these photos of, this is pretty time-consuming stuff, especially in the congested corridor that we're in, that's, you know, been developed for how many years? They're making really good progress on that. And the most exciting thing is, as of yesterday, we had our first concrete pour. We're finally starting to see some fruits of the labor, so I imagine the next month or two, we're gonna see a drastic change and see more of that rock base come in and that asphalt pavement coming in and some of these concrete roads, get these entrances back available to the citizens, which I know has been troublesome for them. But you can see from this photo, you know, we're doing half at a time to keep that other half open for them. I know it's not the most convenient thing at all, but we're trying our best to, to expedite that. So I know I've shown this a few times, phase two phasing plan, but I like to keep it fresh because we will be in this phase, like I said, probably till December of this year is what it's looking like. So just going through it fairly quickly, again, working south is still left, north to the right. We have a lot of work on the east side, south of Thirty-Ninth Street to get done. Then we cross over at the railroad tracks. We got some work on the, the west side there. And then from there on, it's all the east side, all the way up to Forty-Fifth Street. So a lot of this stuff has been happening, this, this big section right here, and then carrying on up to Forty-Fifth. And then phase two C and two D is the actual intersection of Forty-Fifth and Wood Lawn. So upcoming activities, kind of give everyone a kind of heads up of what to expect.
Can't read your Gantt chart.
What's that?
Can't read your Gantt chart.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually a snip shot, or a snip of, of their schedule, the contractor's schedule. And we're working with them to get a more detailed breakdown on that so we can really communicate much better to the citizens. But the, the main critical path items of the storm sewer are, so we want to work from the ground up. But we do have the east half of the drainage structure, just north of Quill Ridge, phase one, we did the west half, now we're into the east half. And then start season paving. The thing I want to know is, south of the railroad tracks, we're gonna see a lot more activity there now. Start seeing that get milled up and that getting worked on. We got, Evergy finally came out yesterday, moved some last light poles we needed to, to get out of the way for the storm sewer and stuff like that, so I would imagine the next few weeks, we'll see a lot more activity south of there. And I know there's that new automotive shop down there at the northeast corner of Thirty-seventh Wood Lawn. We took some time to spend with him. He has, has opening on a Monday, so that Friday before, he makes sure we coordinate with him, and he had the best possible scenario he could have as far as access into his facility, so he was thankful of that. And then what's next is a complete phase two. Like I said, we're gonna be here for a while, be talking about this for a while. But here in the next three to four months, see a lot more improvement, a lot more visual pleasing activities on the side, get those side entrances done, mainline payment, and then move to phase three, which should be a lot less painful than phase two is. It is the beef of this whole project, so once we get to phase three, should be fairly smoother. Obviously, traffic's gonna be more favorable because we have north, southbound the whole way, so. With that, I will stand for any questions you have. That's the update I had. Like I said, progress is pretty dang good. The storm sewer is going in real smooth, material testing, all that's going very well, all passing, so no complaints on that at all.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Zimmerman? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just the wedges that were installed that you talked about, was that in reaction to some incidents with cars going off, or was that more of a proactive measure?
You know, I think Chief mentioned it. Two, I can't remember if it's the last part or it's the meeting before, but he mentioned that might be a good idea just because it is, you know, there, and that's obviously a big concern, so I think it's a little bit of both, just proactive and just seeing traffic, how they're reacting to the traffic control setup, so I think it's a little bit of both.
Are we overall seeing a good reaction to the traffic control setup, or are we still having a lot of issues with people turning the wrong way on the street and other types of issues?
From my recent conversations with the chief, we are having a good reaction to the traffic control. We still do have a few minor occurrences of folks turning the wrong way, and as soon as we hear about those, if there's anything we can do, like change signage around, we'll, we are reactionary and we go ahead and get that done as quickly as possible.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much for a good report and hopefully everything keeps going safe.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns, and I have no cards this evening. Are there any citizens here that would like to speak? See, and then I'll move on to council member reports. Mr. David, would you like to make a report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Just want to say a big thanks to everyone that worked hard to put on the Spring Festival. I did get to attend that briefly and it looks like folks were having a good time and it was well-attended, and as always, those Easter eggs disappear really quickly. It's always fun to watch, so thanks to everyone who, who worked to put that on.
Mr. Welch?
I'd like to remind everybody that we have electronic recycling going on here in the city of Bel Air and also in the county. The county's the next two weekends and city's the last weekend in April, if I remember right, last Saturday. I'm sure Ty's probably got that on his list of things to talk about, so I'll let him take it.
Very good. Thank you. And just a reminder, electronic recycling may seem like a minor thing, but there, I read article here in the last six months that there are six hazardous chemicals in electronics that need to be recycled. They go to the dump and that is a bad thing, okay? I can't name all those chemicals, but there are six of them. So I'll move on to the mayor's report. I hope everyone had a blessed Easter celebration. We have, we received eight applicants for Dr. Joe Schroeder's city council seat. Those have all been given to the city, the current council members. One withdrew the day after he applied, so we One withdrew the day after he applied, so we have seven applicants to consider. In order, in the order I received the application, the candidates are Ashley Markley, Michael Fear, Tyler Din, Damon Russell, Carl Bush, Emily Hamburg, and Edgar Salazar. So council members will be reviewing the information submitted, and I encourage each council member to visit with the candidates and hopefully can be ready to select a replacement for Dr. Schroder's, Schroder's seat on our May third meeting. That's not a guarantee. We may, we may find that we can't do that, but we'll, that's, that's what we're hoping for, okay? So as everyone knows, on April fourth, twenty twenty-two, Diane Nguyen signed a letter that I read at, or April fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting, city council meeting, where she resigned as city council member effective May first. So I am now officially declaring her seat as vacant, and this starts the thirty-day window for people to apply. Uh, we need those applications by May nineteenth. Um, and if we make a decision on doc, on replacement for Dr. Schroder on May third, I will ask the remaining six candidates if they want to be considered for Miss Nguyen's seat. Uh, they will not need to reapply if that's the case, and just tell me and we can say, okay, we, we have that application because we've already got all their information, right? Okay, and of course, uh, we will consider additional applicants, uh, who apply, uh, by the deadline of May nineteenth. And I am asking city staff to use all available communication avenues to advertise this new opening. Uh, please make it clear that this is a second city council position, so that interested citizens will understand that there is a new window opportunity to apply for the second position. We still have, as, uh, Mr. Northwell said, uh, in his presentation, we still have two open positions for the tree board. I did receive one application last week, and I will talk to that applicant very soon, so we got one possibility, okay? Uh, but if anyone would like to serve the city on the tree board, please get that application on the city's website and contact, or contact myself, and we will get the process started. On April eighth, students from Sunrise Christian Academy worked to pick up trash in the section along Fifty-third. Our city manager has also been working with construction companies within the city, soliciting their help to minimize the amount of trash that blows into the ditches and hedgerows along, especially along Fifty-third. That's a great job. The city looks much better, though we've, we've been keeping the trash minimized, and we appreciate the volunteers, the construction people who picked up trash, especially appreciate our city manager for working with these groups to get this trash issue addressed. On April ninth, I attended the Sun, the Spring Festival along with, uh, Councilmember Smith, uh, not together, we just have run into each other there, but uh, it was a great turnout and, and, uh, you can't, if you haven't been there, it's unbelievable how many of those eggs can go into Thirty-second, so. Uh, I really do a big thank you for, uh, sits Bel Air staff, it's Bel Air Police, Bel Air Lions Club for another great event. On April fourteenth, I attended the KDOT Local Consult, Consult on the BIL, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. So just a summary, and it may sound a little bit long, but there's a lot in there. Uh, at, this was at the Kansas Aviation Museum. The, the good and bad of this is that the feds are encouraging package proposals that include more than one project. Uh, that can make it difficult for cities like Bel Air to get a voice in funding, and funding, but we will work with other locales to see what we can put together. So KDOT Secretary Lawrence began the meeting by highlighting that in twenty twenty-one, there were one thousand one hundred eighty-two crashes in work zones in Kansas. Uh, so we just heard about a work zone we have here in Bel Air. I don't know that we've had any crashes there, maybe we have, I just haven't heard, but that's a lot of crashes in the state, okay? Um, so please pay special attention when driving through work zones, so that we don't, we can minimize those. Fortunately, KDOT also saw forty-six percent decrease in workforce accidents in twenty twenty-one, so these are the worker compensation type of injuries, they're not necessarily related to a crash. If somebody, you know, got their hand in the way of a backhoe, some silly, some, I shouldn't say sub, but something like that. Uh, so those are work comp type cases, but, so, um, that's saving the state about a million dollars for working compensation costs. So the BIL includes about three point eight billion dollars for Kansas over five years. That's seven hundred and thirty dollars of this for, is for transportation. There is interest in local roads that connect to highway system, roads like Oliver, Woodlawn, Rock Road, Wood, Webb Road, and Greenwich. Uh, we'll all, all need to investigate what we can do in this area to gain funding for these roads. And that's not saying we're gonna get funding for all those roads, those are just some possibilities I'm throwing out there. There's, uh, forty-five million annually for bridges. Uh, these are to be packaged together by Cedric County. So this can include what is called off-system bridges, those bridges that are not available for other federal money. So most of Bel Air's bridges are, fall in that category. So I'm asking our city manager to work with the Cedric County to include any bridges in Bel Air that are in poor to fair condition. Also part of the BIL is the, uh, they, they often call this the bill, and it's kind of like confusing the bill, bill, right? So, uh, anyway, it has an electrification component to support, uh, electric vehicles. However, Bel Air is not eligible for this money at this time, as the feds are focusing only on interstate routes. And we don't have any here, so unfortunately. So another component of this is rural transit of three point seven million annually. This is urban, rural to urban commute, so public transportation is involved. This could be used to expand reach of public transportation, like have Wichita Bus Service come to Bel Air. There will even consider microtransit applications like, uh, like an Uber, an Uber app, where people can get a ride pickup on demand. Yeah, the city of Arlington, Texas went to that, and it seems to be very successful for them. Uh, so I'm asking our city manager to work with Wichita Transit to see if a program like this could be put together to support Bel Air and other surrounding communities. And then lastly, there's ninety-one million dollars for water infrastructure. Maybe we can put together something to benefit the CCUA as well as Bel Air and Park City and other interested communities. Again, package proposals get more attention. So I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just an update on backflows. Uh, things are going really well. Uh, at this phase, we're having more contact with our licensed contractors, and the feedback we're getting is they're pretty pleased with the online form, that's something we weren't doing before, and the form that, um, staff put together. So we're getting way more licensed contractors up to speed before, uh, the deadline, so that's a good sign for getting completed tests um, done by Bel Air contractors, uh, by June first. Uh, a while ago, Councilmember Welch asked me to explain the rules on chickens in Bel Air, so, um, basically, and I kind of generally answered that it depends, right? So I just wanted to give a high-level summary of when someone might be able to have a few chickens, meaning less than four, because then we run into, above four, we run into kennel issues. So a person, um, basically the pure code says, no person shall keep any rabbits, poultry, or domestic fowl within thirty-five feet of any residence or dwelling other than the residents of the person keeping or maintaining such rabbits, poultry, or fowl. So in most cases, in the R-one and R-two zone, um, the way that the setbacks and the, the houses are, are built, it is sometimes possible, often likely, uh, that someone could have a few chickens, uh, depending on their lot size, unless they had a variance or certain tighter lots, it's, it's pretty likely. Um, and there were a few that were grandfathered in ten years ago or more, so R-one and R-two, you're likely to see that being an option. Um, R-three, we just like to say covenants control, because in Bel Air, every R-three property is under an HOA. So you'd want to go to the HOA standard. Um, in the R-four zone, it's not likely, because most of these lots are just not deep enough to meet the setback requirements, and it's highly unlikely in the R-five zone, because these are the zero lot lines, and so you're probably much closer to the property next to you, and you don't have the, the depth of the backyard to create any distance between the property owner behind you. So those are our general zoning guidelines on chickens. Uh, one, you know, we always recommend call, um, uh, Keith Price, because sometimes if, if someone in an older development and, and depend, depending on where the new development is, there may be some uh, exceptions because of how long they've had the chickens, or the, the time the other homes were built. Uh, but for the most part, these are good guidelines, and then I would recommend someone calling the city on that. So that's all I have to report. Our, our legislature is, is not in session until April twenty-fifth, I think.
Very good. Thank you. I'm glad we're not in Kuwait, because chickens are wild in that island. It's, it's crazy. Oh, yeah, everywhere you go. So, um, move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, uh, expand on Councilmember Welch's, uh, Electronics Recycling Day. Uh, so here's the specifics. It's April thirtieth from nine AM to twelve noon here at City Hall on the north parking lot. Um, IT Source is who we work with to recycle the electronics. Of course, Waste Connections comes in with their, um, their shredder. And the Bel Air Lions Club, uh, basically take care of all of the, uh, work and unloading things for the shredding. And what, uh, so, so everything is free. Um, however, uh, for E, on the E-recycling, they do have a five-dollar charge if you want to destroy your hard drive on site. They can do that, uh, but there is a five-dollar charge. Um, CRTs, flat screens, and TVs are a dollar per diagonal inch, so in other words, if you had a sixty-inch TV, it'd be sixty dollars. Um, so, but all the other E-recycling, there's no charge on that, and of course, all the shredding, they, they actually have the shredder on site, so the documents are shredded here, and again, there's no charge on that. Um, some additional things that are coming up, uh, uh, for the spring. Uh, the Citywide Garage Sale Weekend is May twelfth through the fourteenth. Um, and then the Spring Curbside Cleanup will be May twenty-first, so about a month away on those two events. And that's all ahead, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Move on to ordinance resolutions, final actions, um, and twelve on the agenda. A is, uh, currently the east half of Woodlawn Avenue from Thirty-seventh Street to Union Pacific Railroad Crossing is owned by Cedric County, while the west half is Bel Air. Cedric County is paying a portion of Woodlawn reconstruction project in return, city agreed to annex their portion of the right-of-way. Uh, that agreement was signed by Cedric County in January and then by Bel Air City Council on February first, twenty twenty-two. So this is the final step, and are there any questions of staff? We are still working on an agreement to share the maintenance cost of these roads, shared roads, and Mr. Lashers has a draft agreement, I think he's been discussing with Wichita staff.
Yes, I, uh, put that draft agreement together and sent that over to Wichita. Also sent, uh, one to Sedgwick County, because we have some roads, we're there on one side, we're on the other, um, and then the same with Keachai.
Very good. Thank you. Any response yet?
No response yet.
Okay, thank you. So any, any other, any questions for staff?
So, so we don't have that agreement yet, and what happens if we don't get to that agreement? We, we take all the maintenance?
Yes, so, um, so with, uh, in this situation, that was kind of the agreement with the county, was that they, um, paid us five hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards, um, towards the reconstruction of, of Woodlawn, uh, and then we would take over that, that portion of it. Um, the agreement that the mayor's talking about is one where we have several situations, such as this area, um, Fifty-third, we have some, when you get out on Webb and Greenwich, where the city has annexed the whole road, um, but there's another jurisdiction on the other side. So as the mayor, um, was talking about that, they collect the taxes, they don't have to maintain the road that they use. So the idea was to maybe come up with an agreement, not for basic, um, salt and sanding, pothole, but uh, if we have to reconstruct a road or do a mill and overlay that, or WAMPA, we would apply for WAMPA funding, then they would partner and help, uh, pay for that, so. Um, the agreement was drafted, um, and I sent, as I said, I sent that out, but I haven't received anything.
So this is, uh, something I've talked with, uh, Mayor Whipple about at, uh, City Wichita, and he is supportive of this concept. Uh, he didn't have that specific agreement in front of him, so he can't say that, can't say that he supported this specific agreement, but he's supportive of the idea of, of sharing responsibility there.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Well, no, Smith?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance annexing and incorporating a portion of North Woodlawn Boulevard into the boundaries of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Smith and a second from Mr. Welch, and this is a, uh, ordinance, so we do need to, um, do a roll call. Please call roll. I do not vote on this. Okay. Take me off. Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Very good. Thank you. So item B is developer of Skyview at, uh, Block Forty-nine, third requests a zoning change from AG Agricultural to C-one and C-two commercial with a PUD overlay. The Planning Commission reviewed the request and held a public hearing regarding the matter. After the public hearing, Planning Commission considered the evidence, discussed the plot in relation with zoning codes, as well as the golden factors for zoning, and thoroughly reviewed the matter. The Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval for this rezoning. The request in, in form of a zone ordinance, uh, now comes before the city council for final approval. Any questions of our city attorney? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. David?
I motion to accept an ordinance changing the zoning classification from AG Agricultural to C-one and C-two commercial with a PUD overlay on certain property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, Skyview at Block Forty-nine, third, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Smith, and this is also an ordinance, so we do need to have a roll call vote on this as well.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, as this is a zoning matter, you, I will ask for your vote as well. Um, so Mr. Uh, Mayor Jim Benage?
Yep, aye.
Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And my Stanwin is absent, so the motion carries four to zero.
Very good. Motion carries four to zero. Item C, the developer of, um, Bristol Hollows is ready to move ahead with engineering design on second phase of Bristol Hollows and requesting Garber to be the engineer. Uh, the engineering design costs associated with the project will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against benefiting lots. Any questions for staff? Do we? That's a busy map. Does some, does somebody know what, what exact area this is, this, uh, second phase of Bristol Hollows?
The map that you're looking at is not Bristol Hollows, it is the Cedar Pass Development that is the next item on your agenda.
Okay, that's why. That makes it worse.
Exactly. Um, Bristol Hollows is the development along Fifty-third Street between, it's one of the developments on Fifty-third Street between Woodlawn and Oliver. Um, half, about half was done in the first phase, and the second phase will complete out the development.
Okay, all right, so that's, that doesn't have anything to do with this development. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So I had a question.
Yes.
Um, do we not have to get multiple bids on these items?
Um, I, um, typically we don't, um, the, uh, because it's kind of led by the developer, um, we allow them to choose who they want, um, who they like to work with, as long as we're comfortable with who they work with. Um, and as I said, the cost of this is borne by the developer in turn, and in turn is, or her, um, purchasers of the lots and, and reflected on the special assessments, so.
And being a second-class city, we're not required to go out for bids on projects like this either.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve an agreement for professional services with Garber for Bristol Hollows Phase Two in the amount of two hundred eight thousand, two hundred dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any additional discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Item D, the planning commission reviewed the Northeast Development LLC request to replat approximately 81 acres of agriculture to R5 Residential and C1 Commercial. Public hearing was held with no party speaking. Having thoroughly viewed the issues, planning commission voted five to zero to approve the final plat without changes and recommends the governing body accept the developer's commitment to dedicate certain land within the plat for public purposes. Our city engineer, Ann Stevens, is here to explain the development and answer any questions. And I think this is the right map this time. Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. This is the map of Cedar Pass, formerly known as Rock Spring Fifth. It was approved by the planning commission some time ago, but there were some communication mishaps, I guess, maybe, or lack thereof between ourselves and the engineers as far as when this was going to go forward. There was some, some delay on the name because we knew the name was going to get changed, just did not know what to. So we were waiting for the final name in order to present it to council. This is, as the mayor said, on the hard corner of 53rd and Webb Road. So it will be coming in. There will be two entrances off of 53rd. And then this continues into the north 80 acres that was purchased by a different property owner. So those, the two developments are getting coordinated. We have not seen the plat on that. I think we, well, no, I think we've seen part of the plat on the northern part.
So on this map, 53rd is at the bottom of the map?
Correct.
And Webb is on the right-hand side?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Page 77 of our packet has the application that they submitted for the final plat. And on question 12, they propose a type of street surfacing and they listed asphalt here. I assume that this will follow our typical process where we'll get bids for both and both options will be considered. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is very typical for developers to request asphalt streets when they're submitting the applications.
But we're not limited to what is on this application?
That is, I believe that is correct. That Jackie can, can reference. But yeah, that's what we've been doing on other projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you want to play on that?
I don't have anything to say that there is a restriction. Nothing, no legal guidance says that there's a restriction on the street we select. We, we're in charge of putting in the street, so I don't see how they would be able to control the type of street that goes in.
Mr. Welch.
I'm assuming we're not required to do this, but it bothers me that we have that big a space that I don't see any kind of a park in. Is, is there a requirement we do that? Is there going to be a public area around the pond that looks like there?
No, you're right. And, and that's something that I think probably the council and the planning commission should maybe be discussing. In the past, there are cities that require that. You plat out a certain number of acres and you have to dedicate a certain portion of that for a public purpose, such as a park. And that's not something we require. You're going to get a little pushback, obviously, from the developer because they're giving up an acre or two acres, which is typically on this size, you could, you should be able to get two to three lots per acre. So they're going to give up, you know, three to six lots, which, you know, they're going to sell them for 20,000. So they're going to give up some of that. But I think for the public that live in this area, they probably very much appreciate, you know, a park. So I think that's something that the council should probably look at discussing whether that's going to be a requirement.
That is something that the planning commission requests each and every time. But as Mr. Lasher said, it is not currently a requirement, so they cannot force it at this time.
Is any of that land over where the pond is going to be accessible to the housing development? It doesn't look like it. It looks like it's going to be some people's backyards.
There is no direct access to that location at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I, I think our master growth plan indicates that we have, we need parks in specific regions of the city and has kind of guidance on where those should go. Was that considered as part of the planning commission discussion? Because I know that that is one of the golden factors is the consistency with the master growth plan. Was that part of the discussion here?
Yes, it was considered. It was noted that this area is in the park service area. But there is no particular guidance that says there must be a park in this area in order to approve it.
Right. If we were going to require the addition of a park, we'd want to do that through comp plan and then followed by codification, not, you know, not on a case-by-case basis. So it would be like Ty said, you know, per certain acres, you have to build a park. On a case-by-case, it does come off like a taking, like we're, we're requiring land without kind of any notice or any kind of equal standard across other developers. So yeah, this discussion, planning commission did make a strong suggestion as they always do. And they rely on floodplain and reserves that the city might own, that the city might make a park over there. But there has been a lot of talk about a park in that quadrant of the city.
So other developments we have, other developments we've approved recently have all had parks in. At least last two or three that I know of have had parks in. And I know, again, you're not saying there's a requirement, but there is, there is a precedent there. All right. Okay. Mr. Smith, or Mr. Welch?
Well, I was, I was remembering basically the same thing you're saying is that we put several small developments in south of 53rd. And those had like a one-lot park or something, just something that the residents could use. I really hate to see wall-to-wall houses.
We could certainly ask the developer if they would be willing to, you know, dedicate a lot or two for a park. As Jackie said, it's not in our codes that we require that. So, and what's happened in those other developments is those developers felt that it was important, so they did set aside or donate a lot for that. So we can certainly ask the developer.
How do these lot sizes compare? Are these bigger lots, smaller lots? Is it going to be high-density housing? Or is it going to be, you know, three or $400,000 houses?
I, this is Gene Vittarelli, who's been doing all of Rock Springs. And to, to my knowledge, they're starter homes, which a starter home is a $250,000 to $300,000 home.
These would all be single-family homes as far as what he's planning on at this time. So they would be similar to the single-family portions of Rock Spring, of Rock Spring on the south side of 53rd. He did put in, as Mr. Lasher mentioned, a park, I believe that was in Rock Spring Fourth to serve the Rock Spring initial phase, Rock Spring Second, Rock Spring Third, and Rock Spring Fourth, which is quite a bit more lots than this subdivision has.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I, I don't think that I'll vote against this because it doesn't have a park since we don't have anything that requires that. And, you know, the planning commission's already reviewed it and they, they found the same thing. I think that, that makes sense. Ultimately, the home, the people that buy the lots there, that's one of the things that they're going to have to think about when they're buying a lot in this addition is, do the amenities, you know, kind of meet their needs and match what they're looking for? Do you think it'd be a good idea if we can mention to Gene that, hey, this is something that we're concerned about? We have a good relationship with them and just letting them know our thoughts on it, I think, would be great. But I'm not going to vote against it because of that.
Well, since we don't have something that says we have to have them, I won't vote against it either. But I'd like to see us discuss this in the future, that there have, you know, a certain quantity of land has to have some park space.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I will make a motion to accept the dedications within the final plat for Rock Springs Fifth slash Cedar Pass and authorize all required signatures.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. This is a call for roll call vote. Because it's the plat.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to confirm with our city attorney, this is not a zoning matter, correct?
It is. It falls under planning and zoning code.
Okay. So then I will ask for your vote, Mayor Jim Benage.
Opposed.
Mr. Greg David.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
So it appears that it passes three to one, Mayor.
Motion passed three to one. Thank you. I'm going to make an exception in our agenda and move on to executive session, item 13. And entertain a motion for 25-minute executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to the KSA 754319 exception for attorney-client privilege. Inviting the city manager, the city attorney, and Jennifer Hill. The meeting will be for a period of 25 minutes, and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 8:20 p.m. I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any discussion? No? Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are in executive session for 25 minutes. Pose same sign. We are in executive session for twenty-five minutes.
Okay, we held the executive session, no binding action was taken, and I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We'll move on to item E on the agenda. So this is, so every new development, city requires a development agreement to be negotiated and approved. The agreement spells out in writing the responsibilities of each party during the construction and after. This agreement is filed with the plat for future reference. Staff and developers have agreed upon the language contained in this agreement and is now ready for final approval by the city council. And this is on Skyview at block forty-nine. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I moved to approve an agreement concerning the development of Skyview at block forty-nine, second edition, Bel Air Sedgwick County, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
One second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Here none, I call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Move on to item F. So the city's rotary mower is scheduled for replacement in 2022. This mower gets heavy use, mowing ditches and large areas of land. The current rotary mower being replaced is a two thousand six Land Pride and worn out. The twenty twenty-two CIP capital improvement budget includes this replacement. So bids went out to three dealers and the low bid is from Schmidt and Sons, which has the mower in stock, which is surprising, if somebody has something in stock. Airplay Psycho, they got a lot of inventory, but they're always missing one part. So when that one part gets in, they ship that inventory out. So, anyway, so that's cool. So, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
One question, it looked like on these three different options, you know, we got three bids, which is great. But I'm not sure that they're all like the same brand and exactly the same rotary mower. It looks like there's maybe different brands and slightly different options. And I'm always in favor of selecting the best value, not necessarily the cheapest option. Do we feel like the lowest priced option is the right option to select based on the quality and longevity and all of the features? Or do we just value it being in stock? I'm just curious. What all did we consider there?
Yeah, that's tough, you know, when you get bids because a John Deere, let's say a tractor, this is a mower tractor. John Deere tractor is a little different than a caterpillar tractor, et cetera, et cetera. And so, so those are tough. But in this situation, they're all very, very similar. The, I think that's a Land Pride from Schmidt and Sons. They, Public Works has several Land Pride pieces of equipment, they like them. They, Schmidt and Sons, they buy parts from them. So they were very comfortable with the low bid and so they recommended accepting it. So, yeah.
Was there any warranty to come with this?
I don't remember. Do you remember Ted, was there a warranty on? I don't remember.
So Dave does a really good job and I know I wrote this, but I went in conjunction with him. If you see the land or the report for the next item, he notes the warranty. Which makes me think, and I don't know for sure, but there's not enough of a difference in a warranty to note. So therefore, I would say there is any type of equipment's gonna have a protection on it, but I wouldn't say there's one better than the other. Does that make sense?
Yeah. We don't know if it's ninety days or a year.
Not sure, I can, I can try to find out for you, but.
I'd be surprised with this particular type of equipment if it had much warranty at all.
Yeah. I gotta ask.
It may warrant something like the tires not wearing out or something like that, but if you hit a log with one of those blades and bend the shaft, they're not gonna cover that.
Right, right. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll take entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Schmidt and Sons in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred for replacement rotary mower and authorize the mayor to sign.
One second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. Any other discussion? Here none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Item G, so this is, Public Works has been experimenting with different methods to repair the streets. So last year, they rented a mastic melting machine to try and they realized a great value in the machine when making many types of street repairs, including potholes, wide cracks and joints, skin patch repairs, leveling manholes and leveling bridge deck approaches. So staff was able to repair roughly five times more street crack per day while using less workers with this machine. There's only one of these machines available to rent in Wichita area that costs about a thousand dollars per week. Anticipating the need for more street repairs in the coming years, Public Works requested bids from two local vendors that sell these machines. The twenty twenty-two CIP budget included adding this machine. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Is this only for asphalt street repairs? Is this exclusively for that use?
No, they can use it for sealing cracks in concrete too, when they use that tar or whatever is that stuff that they.
The tar seal.
Yeah.
So this is like for the black stuff that fills in all the cracks on the road?
Yeah.
Helps do that faster.
From what I understand, this machine just has more capability to do larger cracks in the asphalt. Cause we do have a lot of asphalt roads still, so.
Yeah.
Has a lot of benefits repairing those, but, but yeah, it can be used for any kind of crack seal.
I'm excited to see this on our agenda, I think, a machine like this that helps us get five times the street repair done. It sounds like an incredible deal at a sixty thousand dollar price tag, as we all know that there's, there's not a shortage of street repair that's needed, so this will be great.
I might, I might add, the, the big thing too is it only takes four men, or four Public Works employees to man. Right now, they're doing, using six with their current method. So, more, more time savings, more efficiency. I don't see a downside in this purchase.
I'm assuming we'll use it more than five weeks out of the year or two if we own it. So our payback would be shorter.
Do, do we have an estimate as to how many weeks here we might use it, just from a kind of payback perspective?
No, I don't know. I know that Dave said that they were going to start working on asphalt repair this month. So I would assume they would start using it in April, May. And then it seems like they'll do asphalt repair through October, maybe end of November, depends on the temperature a lot. So I would think, based on the work range for asphalt, that they do six months would be my guess.
Is this machine available? Is this in stock?
That I don't know. I did.
One of them is.
Mid-May delivery, so that's about as fast as you can get these days.
They'll push it out two weeks and then two weeks.
Yeah.
By the end of the summer, we'll get one, huh?
Well, please keep us updated on, on how this, this purchase is used and we'll be excited to see that. I want to make a motion to accept the bid from Craft Co. in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty cents.
One second.
I have a motion from Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any other questions or discussion? Here none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Oh, item H, bid to install streetlights at Central Park. So last meeting, we talked about this issue, says city installed and is responsible for streetlights in Central Park due to their design. Since Prestwick going north of Central Park Avenue was recently completed, staff has identified the need for the streetlights that match the city lights in Central Park. Council is considering this, considered this project in April fifth meeting to table the action. They wanted to inspect the lights at night as well as ask for HOA input. So Central Park HOA felt that because Prestwick is now a main artery for fifty, from Fifty-third, it should be retained the original look and feel of all the other entrances. Prestwick is, also leads right up to the roundabout that echoes those lights. So the HOA board felt that the lights were important to Central Park by, the council chose not to use the vintage style black lights. The Central Park HOA would like an assurance that if and when one of the lights that span the park from Woodlawn over to the village, Cambridge and Central Park Avenue, should need to be replaced, that the style not be compromised and be replaced by anything other than what is currently in place. That might be a hard thing to agree, guarantee, okay? But anyway, landing HOA, Central Park Third Edition, also felt continuity was important for the area and the same light should be used. I did drive through there at night. I, I, I think from aesthetic purpose, for the aesthetic reasons, it should be done. That's my personal feeling, but, Mr. Welch.
Did we price aluminum poles like what they're using west of Prestwick in that new development?
Is that the more of a typical street light?
Yeah, but it's not a wooden pole.
Yeah.
I think what you told us was we could get wooden poles installed for free, basically.
Yeah, and I don't know what those, they're, those are usually paid for by the developer, so I don't usually see those prices. So I'm not sure, my guess is gonna be a thousand bucks, but I mean, this would be my guess, but there, there's, it'd be a much less, no question, much less than, than those, so, but yeah.
Well, I think we should have, we should continue the lighting down Fifty-third in the style it already is on Fifty-third. I do not think we should be spending ten thousand dollars apiece on light posts. And there is definitely no way we can guarantee that somebody runs over one of those posts in five years, we can buy a replacement because the manufacturer may not be making them.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
My thought on the issue is, I've thought about this. I, I'm just not sure that it's appropriate for tax dollars to fund kind of premium light poles in, in just one neighborhood. And so I'm not really in favor of the premium light poles at the taxpayer expense. If the HOA wants to fund that for the aesthetics of their neighborhood, I think we could certainly support them and, you know, whatever is needed to get those installed, but just having tax dollars from that, I don't think I'll be supporting.
That's what was not clear to me at the last meeting, our obligation as a city, being the developer, and how long that lasts. How do we get out of that obligation?
Never. No, I don't know. No, so really technically, the way it works is the developer is the developer until, typically the, the covenant state that, until they've sold the last lot. And then once that last lot is sold, then the HOA manages it. So Bel Air City does not own any lots in Central Park, so therefore, I think it's clear to say that the city is not the developer anymore.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
We also weren't actively involved in the putting in of the, the latest properties over there, correct? Along this thoroughfare?
No, that's, yeah, that's Central Park Third Edition. And they have the, I think fiberglass light poles.
Oh, I thought they were aluminum.
So have we talked with them about this, about doing this, about the possibility of them funding this?
Uh, no, no. What, what my thought is, if, if council denies this request, then I could ask HOA, here's the cost, if you'd like to do that. And if not, then the city will look at aluminum or fiberglass, something like that.
Which HOA would fund it? Because it's not, the HOA that's right to the west of it is not the same one as the ones that don't like it.
Yeah, and that's, that's the unique piece, is there's three HOAs in Central Park. Or actually four. There's the Villas at Prestwick, that they maintain that area, which is just right over here at the seniors. Then you have Central Park Third, which actually butts up against that road. Then you have Central Park Proper, and that basically is from the ponds over to Rock. And then Central Park Fourth, or the Villas, is between City Hall and Elk Creek to the south and then to the ponds. So there's three of them.
So the developer there at Central Park Third has very few houses, and I know he hasn't bonded that yet, that project. Is there any reason he, he wouldn't go and put these in?
I could, I would ask him as well.
As part of that, as part of that development project?
Yeah. He could. Typically, we don't include street lighting in, in development. That's the developer typically pays for that. Your question would be, could, could, could basically his development pay for that and use it as part of his special assessments?
Right.
Yeah, I, I think it could be done.
I mean, just, just a question.
Yeah, I, I think we could do it. It would be whether he would, you know, sign the petitions and then it could be done that way. Yeah.
Well, I think it should be done, but I, I get the council of what you're saying, so it sounds kind of like, well, why are we doing it? Yeah, so, Mr. Welch, did you have a comment?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the quote.
I'll second.
Motion to deny by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Smith. Any additional discussion? Here none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Any other discussion, future issues? Does anyone have additional items to discuss or future issues to mention? Everybody left us, it was executive session time.
I did, Mayor, I did Google your question, and that mower has a one-year parts and labor.
Okay, thank you. Now we know. Parts and labor. Hit logs, didn't cover, right? Okay. All right, well, if no additional items to discuss, move on to adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. No one wants to discuss this, so I won't even ask. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. We are adjourned. See everyone in a fortnight.